Okay. Good night, everybody. We are live. This is February eleventh and this is a work session tonight. So we appreciate those that are watching from home. Also, just want to give a shout out to Antoinette and Linda who will be watching from home tonight. So hello, girls. We're gonna move right along. We're gonna roll downhill tonight. We have a mayor's award to Jason Hutchison next week. Number two is a motion for preliminary adoption, second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one twenty-eight tree service business of the city of Burlington Municipal Code. Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading. It's again some minor modifications to the tree service business section of city code related to what's required on an application for tree service business and then what the safety standards are. So a pretty minor change, just to have a little more detail and clarification.
Cleaning it up.
So, yeah, for two and three, can we, if there's no impact, can we waive that in the city council meeting and do a final?
That's a good question. I've got no problem waiving.
I don't either.
All right.
Well, let's just go ahead and address number three, Mr. Tisland. A motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-one trees of Burlington Municipal Code.
So again, no changes from the previous reading, just referencing the NCA three hundred, the American National Standard Institute for how true pruning, true tree pruning shall be conducted.
All right. We wanna do it right. You guys good?
Yep.
All right. Number four is a motion for final adoption of the ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-three twenty-three, amending section F applicability of the plan and section L application requirements of the urban revitalization plan for the city of Burlington. Mr. Tisland.
No changes on this either. This is primarily changing what the timeframe for filing of a tax payment form is, mirroring state code, and then the other minor changes addressing or updating it to include multi-residential as a classification.
You guys good?
Good.
Right on. Number five is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand nineteen Deitwen and Gladys White Park Reno.
So this is a second attempt to get bids on this project. We did get four bids back, which is essentially removing some of the existing asphalt, the western basketball court, regrading that, and then having new sidewalk entrances into the park, having a little better slope and condition for that, to the playground area and to the existing basketball courts and shelter down there. And then there'll be a concrete walkway around the existing playground as well. This does not include the playground. That's a separate project that the parks department will handle once everything's done. But it will be removal of the existing playground and then we'll go back in with a new playground. So did get four bids. Engineer's estimate was around seventy thousand, low bid of forty-six thousand five hundred forty-nine, which is good. And then three other bids at forty-nine, seventy-three, and eighty-four thousand, so.
Now, just, we only had one person bid on this project last time around?
We had zero bids.
Zero bids.
We had zero bids, okay.
Good deal.
So Four Seasons Excavating was low bid on this.
Yeah, I see that.
We're good?
Good.
Okay, which brings us to the proposed consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Are we okay there?
Yep.
Number two is a resolution approving a contract for towing services between the city of Burlington and Mike Campbell's Towing. Chief.
As you recall, a few months ago, we did an RFP requesting proposals. We received two. One of them was incomplete. The other one was from Campbell's after much consideration. I think the memo should be included in your packet there about kinda outlining some of the highlights of that. This'll run basically from the time that it's signed or this, your signature's on it as the councillor and the mayor through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty. So it'll be a one-year contract and we'll revisit it. And some of the rates are on that memo as to different groups and the pricing that's on there, which is a little bit of savings as we talked about originally with the RFP. Not substantial, but it does set the standard rate, so we know what we're getting.
Chief, was this not something we had in place before?
We did not. We used a, a, I think it was a bi-weekly, every two weeks, the record service, record service would change. We'd utilize them both. Always looking for something more standard with some liability concerns that we had for any accidents or coverages that were needed there and the equipment and I guess I wanna say the functionality of the equipment and, and standardization overall.
This is very similar to the language when we bid out the last time that we bid out, but that was twenty years ago.
Mm-hmm. It was in the nineties.
So, and that was on a one-year basis at that point, too. I don't know what has happened in the meantime outside of just an ongoing relationship.
And I know that other communities also use, some use a towing contract, some do not, so.
Now, the vehicles that are towed, are they secure?
Yeah, yes.
Secure a lot.
Yeah, it spells it out in there and it's within two air miles, which adds the convenience to the, the person that has the vehicle towed rather than it being further away and it being an inconvenience for them to get there. And there's some security issues that are noted in there. If it's an inside storage facility, which we rarely use for our toes, because we have our own and for storage, they have some requirements in there to be under lock and key and, and things of that nature. And then outside storage would have to have a perimeter fence, a six-foot-high perimeter fence, which Campbell's does not have at this time, obviously because of the weather, but in the spring, once that does happen, he'll notify me. I'll go out and inspect the facility and then we'll move forward. He has had some incidents out there of theft and he realizes it. And I was just talking to him earlier today about that requirement and, and he said he definitely wants the fence up and probably some additional cameras to help prevent some of the things that are going on, on out there, not just with our calls or our toes, but for personal toes. People wanna go out and retrieve things and, and he's not sure if they're the owner or not, but they still manage to slip out there and get into his yard and steal things, actually, so.
Okay.
We good?
I'm good.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Number three on the proposed consent is a resolution approving urban revitalization tax exemptions pursuant to chapter four zero four of the state code of Iowa tax abatements. Steph?
So what was in your packet is, the first page is just showing all the tax abatement totals that we've had since the inception of the program in nineteen ninety-two. So, and when you look at that column that says valuation, again, that is just an estimate that was put like on a building permit. So it becomes a whole different ballgame when it gets over to the assessor's office and then they actually assess that. So you'll see in exhibit A are listing all the different, the first one are the new residential. We had nineteen new houses built that applied for this tax abatement. Last year, we had twenty-one renovations. Those were down. We had thirteen in the prior year and only four this year. We did have six multifamily residential's. Four of those were down at the McConnell Lofts. And then there was another duplex and then the new building they put up out, oh, on West Avenue. I'm not sure what those apartments are called.
The Coop.
Stonegate Apartments.
Stonegate, okay. So they put up a new building out there. And last year, we had zero in multifacial. And then down you'll see the commercial businesses that applied for it. The Roosevelt Avenue, that's the Panera and the Cold Stone, the buildings that were up, being put up in front of One City. Weingard, the ten million dollar valuation one was the Hampton Inn that they built. And then Jefferson Street renovation, that was the Waken Bank Building. So we had five of them this year. Last year, we had four. So that's what will be, once you approve it next week, that gets sent over to the assessor's office and then again, their taxes will be abated however they choose in the future. So the other sheet I handed out before the meeting, everyone asked then, oh, how much is being abated year to year? So we started this a few years ago where we're comparing last year's to the current year. So these are actual numbers from the assessor's office, Des Moines County Assessor's Office. So you can see these abatements are the only ones we have control of, because there are other abatements out there. The state has some credits. But we just report on the ones that have been approved at this level. So last year, we had thirty-three million abated in valuation. This year, it's down to thirty-one. And you can see, you know, obviously, we have some of the residential falling off. One of the things I thought I'd just point out is that total three-year commercial, that one increased. Basically, that, those that came on last year, we had, so these would've been people that got approved the prior year. Flintridge Drive had Sea Cat pulled up a new building out there. Frank Millard did their new building down on Jefferson and Main, or not Jefferson, Main and Valley. And then the other one increase was Parkside Brewery remodel, so. But you can see our, a lot of the other categories had decreased in valuation, meaning more were putting back on the tax rolls, so. And then at the bottom, I just kinda divided by a thousand times our current tax rate, and that shows you in the dollars how much money is not coming into our budget but is being abated. So it's about a half a million dollars. If you have anything to add.
Is this available on the website, too?
No, I just created this this week, but we could probably get it out there somewhere.
Do you by chance have a copy of the schedule, the ten-year schedule, the abatement schedule?
Um, that's online.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, if you go to the.
The percentages.
The percentages, yeah. If you go online, that's, I don't have that with me.
Different, different places, though, too. Like downtown has a seven-year hundred percent and then the seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five. And your residential citywide has a different ten-year abatement schedule.
A sliding scale, eighty down to ten percent.
But it would make sense. I don't know where you have, you, you probably have application forms out there, or no?
Yeah.
Under finance and development, I think.
So it should be in the same area where you would list the schedules for that.
How long, how long have we had you, Steph? How long have you worked for the cities?
It'll be eight years this May.
I don't want you to jinx this. Hey, man, talking about. All right, yeah, here's to eight more.
Thanks, Steph.
Thanks, Steph.
Thank you, Seth.
Good, good deal. Okay. Next is, ladies, I'll leave your copies in your mailbox. Next is number five, a resolution approving extension of contract for real estate services with Terrace Real Estate Group LLC for marketing and selling the Burlington Police Department facility located at four twenty-four North Third Street.
We, we had an agreement for having this listed for, Eric, do you know, was that six months or a year previously?
Yeah.
This would extend it for a year, though. It, it had ex, what, what's that?
No, your phone.
It had expired and we're looking to renew that. It may come with no consequence, depending on how things move forward. If we end up ultimately demolishing that property, it's gonna be a different type of a, a listing arrangement. But we are also gonna be, we, we'd recommend going ahead and getting this renewed and so that they can be involved in a marketing process. One of the things that's gonna come up the next work session, tentatively, but I think they're on, on schedule to be able to present, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Council is gonna bring a proposal for marketing that facility to give a one last effort on that prior to going through a process of looking to demolish. Again, we're, we're looking to borrow funds to, to do the demolition. We've kept bond council informed to what we're looking at for a potential alternative there. Depending on if, if we do move forward with that and market it and you were, we were to ultimately find someone to go into a redevelopment arrangement on that, we could repurpose those borrowed funds and they, they'll work, walk us through that if that were to be the case.
Right.
But we're, we do have everything in line depending on, for trying to make sure that we keep both routes open as we move forward.
Is the building in a position right now where it's compromised in any way, where it could just fall down? I mean, structurally, it's sound, I mean.
Structurally, it has issues. If you could, if you go back into the eastern. The east side, you can, it's very noticeable that you've got a shift in the floor.
Okay.
So could there be something that happens? Yeah, I think that's been a somewhat of a concern over the last few years.
Man, I remember walking through, Chief. I just didn't commit to memory the.
The concern is on the, on the east side and, and with the mortar, the mortar that's in the building and the moisture, when that moisture gets in there, it freezes and then thaws. So this year would probably be more an extreme chance for something to happen, for it to move. And that's always a given. The, the buildings downtown that I have seen collapse usually happen in the spring with the thaw. So with that being said, every, every thaw, every freeze and thaw season is probably gonna be, there's gonna be some movement in that building, in my opinion. And that's what we kind of were thinking from the, the study. The feasibility study is still online. Anybody can look at it and kinda go through it with the pictures. And I'm sure it has not gotten any better since we have vacated it and, and there's not the day-to-day maintenance going, going on there, so.
Yeah, that's the structure that right now we have kept heated at a low level, just until the, there is a final decision to, I mean, to move forward on it. If we were to move forward on a demo, that would be when we cut off utilities.
Are we periodically going in there then and taking a look?
Yes.
Good. Thanks.
We good? Okay, let me back up to number four, friends. The resolution approving engagement letter with Piper Jaffray Company?
This is what I thought was on next.
To serve as an underwriter for issuance of five million eight hundred forty thousand dollar sewer revenue refunding bonds. Series two thousand nineteen B.
One of the things that when Travis Quiers was here presenting, he mentioned the bond issue for doing our new debt for capital projects in this year's CI, Capital Improvement Plan, that were funded with debt service or geo-bond. We also talked about the potential of doing a refinancing of a bond issue. We have, the two thousand ten eleven series bond is one that he reviewed at that point, looked at a potential savings of, I think the present value of savings was about two hundred and ninety, just shy of two hundred and ninety thousand. Savings as a percentage of refunded bonds was a little over four percent, which met the threshold for being worthwhile considering doing a refinancing. For us, a bigger issue or a, a side issue that goes with it is debt coverage ratios that we have to hit. This helps us to make sure that doing this will help us to make sure that we maintain our debt coverage issues, because it changes how, how that calculation is done. So there's a dual benefit for doing it. I think we've already signed a similar agreement with Piper Jaffray. It's already started to move through the process with, for the geo-bond issue. This would do a similar engagement with them to, to do our sewer bond refinancing. It, the letter is a simple letter authorizing them to move forward. They'll look for private placements. They'll pass on their, their fee is about a one percent underwriting fee.
Okay. You guys good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number six, we have some hearing set for March fourth and the eighteenth. Tisdale just got me. The first, consideration of plans inspected for the two thousand nineteen Locust Sewer Separation Project. That's gonna be on March fourth. B is consideration of fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, March fourth. And then C is consideration of a sewer revenue refunding loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed six million five hundred thousand dollars. That's gonna be on March eighteenth. Anything you wanna say on that? Then number seven, these public hearings previously, previously scheduled by the city council, A, the consideration of two thousand nineteen amendment to urban renewal plan for Burlington Consolidated Urban Renewal Area related to the use of incremental property tax revenues for public improvements, March fourth. B, the consideration of a two thousand nineteen A general obligation loan agreement in a principal amount not to exceed four million nine hundred thousand, March fourth. And then C consideration, consideration of an application for a state revolving fund, CRF loan, for the combined sewer separation throughout the Locust base in March eighteenth. So that brings us to, did you wanna say anything on that, James?
No, not unless you need a review on any of them.
I think we're good, guys?
Mm-hmm.
Good on that. That brings us to our discussion items. Number one is an updating, updating of the twenty-eight E, Des Moines County. But the, but the, but the, but that's all, folks. Updating the twenty-eight DESCOM agreement. Shanna?
Shanna, yes, Shanna Krogmar. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the new director of DESCOM, or I guess not new anymore. It's been about six months. But I'm here today and, and going around to all the different city councils. Five years ago, DESCOM was created. Before that, it was part of the Burlington Police Department. It was created as a separate legal entity five years ago that combined all of the different user agencies and groups and cities, whatnot. When they did that, the funding structure was basically divided by population. So city of Burlington had sixty-three percent of the population roughly, so they pay sixty-three percent of the total budget and so on and so forth. The smaller agencies pay a smaller amount. That original agreement was put in place for five years and that is coming up June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. So at that point, we have the option to renew it, extend it, replace it, kinda decide if we like the way it's going, we can keep it the way it is. If we wanna make changes, now's the time to do that. So there's a control board that sets the budget. Mr. Billups is on that control board, as is Mr. Furno. So they're familiar with kinda how our budget is going right now. And basically, what I'm here to talk about is there is an option to change the funding mechanism. Basically, what that would amount to is instead of dividing it by population and, and it coming out of your general fund, there would be the option to have a separate countywide levy, emergency management levy, that would come out of the county's general supplemental levy. And then every, basically every citizen in the county that pays taxes would be taxed the same amount. So with that being said, we're, like I said, I'm kinda going around to all of the different city councils, but we're gonna get a group together and definitely address this. We don't wanna wait till the last minute and just throw something together at the last minute. So we'd really like to get a group together, you know, March, early April at the latest, and decide if there's consensus, if there's, if there's enough people who want to consider changing the funding mechanism, or if people are happy with the way it is and wanna, you know, continue that. But we wanna give everybody a, a chance to voice their opinion.
Right on, right on.
I think Jim sent, gave you.
Yeah, so with the memo that you have there, I did wanna kinda just sort of outline some of the same things that Shanna's already covered, but our portion of the budget, we, for the current year's budget, or for fiscal year two thousand twenty that we're right in the process of trying to get approved, our share is six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. That's the equivalent of about a ninety cent tax levy. If this, we don't have a spot on our, for our tax levies, we don't have a, a line item that is for a communication center. So we can't just do a line item, a budget amount that covers for DESCOM. It comes out of our gen, general property tax levy. If this were transferred to the, and I'm not exactly sure how the line items work on the county's budget, but they do have a line item specifically for a.
Right. It'd go, it would go in the general supplemental tax levy and it would go under emergency management. Iowa Code twenty-nine C, chapter point nine and seventeen, I think, are the two that, that allow for that. And then essentially, the budget as a whole would be combined with the county's emergency management budget and it would go through their budget approval process after it. I mean, it would continue to go through our control board and, you know, Burlington has two members and, and the county has two and the city of West Burlington has one. That approval process wouldn't change, but then it would have another layer of having to go through the, the county's board.
You would have a, the end result there would, you would have a, a line item, a property tax levy that was specifically allocated towards DESCOM. It would be very easy to see how much property tax was, was specifically for DESCOM. It would put, put us in a position, if we had that going, if this was already in an approved arrangement as we went into this budget season, we could be talking about reducing our property tax levy by ninety cents. As it is, if we're, if there was discussion of amending how that structure occurs, as soon, soonest that the transition would be, we'd, we'd have to operate the first year the same way that we currently are, but the second and subsequent years, theoretically, you could look at going to that countywide tax levy and having us have next year a consideration of a ninety cents decrease in our property tax levy.
Which would then be added on by the county, because it's gotta be moving up somewhere.
Yep. But in, in ours, it's a hidden, it's a hidden levy. You don't know what you're paying it for. There, it's, it's one that you can specifically allocate towards this. As we've talked about this at DESCOM board meetings, the other communities have expressed support in this. I wouldn't say the county has acted as excited about the idea.
Don't say it.
But I think this, as, and I assume as you go around, you're gonna come back with what you're hearing from the other communities as to whether there's a, how strong a level of support there is.
I mean, is there any, is there any, does this influence the amounts that the citizens pay at all? Should its net benefit for them is?
No.
It's just where you're seeing the property taxes allocated, whether it's in the city, cities and the county or just in the county. Every taxpayer's still gonna get a bill on it.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit more of a, I would guess, in my layman's terms, a proper way to do it versus just coming out of a general fund.
Um, there's, I've, I've said it in our meetings before, but there's a, there's a hundred and thirteen PSAPs and there's about a hundred and twelve different ways to fund it. So a lot of the bigger cities are still doing it the way we're doing, where they, they divide up the population and everybody just contributes out of there. A lot of the smaller cities are funded through the emergency management levy. I think we're number fifteen as far as area for, for our PSAP size, so we're on the bigger side, but.
Wouldn't this theoretically maybe protect you if one of the cities wanted to pull out or contribute, contribute less?
Um.
If it was a countywide levy versus just a.
Yes or no? I mean, they would still probably be able to pull out. I don't know what kind of financial hardship that would cost for them. Obviously, they still need somebody to.
Sure.
Answer their phones when they call nine-one-one, so. Yeah, I guess.
I was just thinking if someone said, well, look, we're gonna do, we're, we're a peaceful little town. We're gonna do on, by, we wanna go by call.
Sure.
Yeah, and so that, that, I think this is a more fair way to do it.
I, I think this definitely reflects everybody. I mean, if you live out in the county and you pick up the phone and dial nine-one-one, you expect the same services if you live in Burlington. So maybe having everybody pay the same amount is the proper way to do it. I don't necessarily have an opinion one way or the other as far as the funding mechanism. I see both sides. I see the benefits and the drawbacks on both sides. But I think, I mean, now's the time to have that conversation.
Looking forward to hearing what, what you, how this proceeds with getting the input.
Yes. I am going around, next week I have the other, I have Danville, Minneapolis, and then West Burlington. And then I still have to loop back around and talk with the county, but, and then I can update, after I have a chance to speak with everybody, I'd like to get something on the books so we can kinda hash it out and see which direction everybody wants to go.
DESCOM as an agreement has worked out fairly well for all of us. I don't know, Chief, if you had any comments on how this structure works versus when it was under the PD's daily responsibilities?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of things have changed from when it was at the police department. We used to supervise it. We used to provide the supervisor for it and pay the bill. And basically, the funding just solely came from us. So when this, when this was, came about five years ago, it's a more, it shares the, I guess, the, the financial aspect of it throughout the community and the people that are using the services. There still are times when there's talk about other entities wanna pay, pay for, excuse me, the amount of services that they use or the calls for service, which is not the fair way, because those services are there twenty-four-seven.
Right on.
Uh, every day.
Yep.
Throughout the year. So the fair, the fairest way that we could figure out five years ago was this, this way. And then other, like Shanna has said, some people use the levy, some people use this by, by population. So it has taken that burden away from us as the police department or us as a city entity, solely having the say-so over the whole thing, which was an issue back then also. You know, we pretty much dictated, this is the way it's gonna be. And now there's more of an equal opportunity by vote, by the control board and an advisory board to kinda decide how this is gonna play out. And she comes to the councils or they come to the councils for approval and any questions that do come up. But there's still some arguments about we're paying too much here and there, so. And I think we pay a fair share of that total budget. So it's worked out better for us as the police department or us as the city to share that, not just the responsibility, but share the, the financial part of it also.
So we don't wanna see the twenty-eight E go away. I think that we wanna make that abundantly clear. We're happy that we have this arrangement.
Yeah, the only concern and, and you kinda, uh, touched on a little bit is if an entity, uh, wants to back out. What, what happens or what leverage is there to say, you know, we're no longer providing you services, which I don't think will happen. Uh, the voice of reason needs to, to come through and, and they still need to fund their portion of it. And if they understand the budget and what happens in the budget, that, she's available and makes herself available to talk about those things also. And each, each person on the control board also does their share for, for each entity they represent.
Staff would recommend, I, well, I guess you don't have so much care about where the funding comes from, whether it's us or, or them.
I, I jokingly had talked to you about, you know, it, it comes under the burden of the police department's, uh, budget, but, uh, it's shared by the fire department and other entities also, but it, it's, it's one, it's one, uh, general fund that it comes out of, so that's just where it's lined item out of is, is the police budget, but it doesn't, uh, really make, I don't, I don't have a, opinion one way or the other, you know, but.
I, I'd have a strong, I'd, I'd say it would make a lot of sense to move to the, uh, county levy.
I agree.
I'm, I'm all in on that.
I agree.
And the levy would help like, uh, for those agencies that have concerns about it, uh, and not wanting to be involved with that twenty-eight E or, or not wanting to pay their share and wanting to back out of that agreement. It would protect them also.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Chief.
Shannon, anything else? Any other questions?
I don't have any.
You have been fantastic. Thank you for coming down. Bless you and all that good stuff.
Shannon, how long have you been here? I'm sorry.
Six months.
Six months.
Still a good job.
And you don't, uh, you're not tired of James in the six months?
She doesn't see me that often.
You're blessed. Okay, so, annual bus report, Nick McGregor.
Good evening.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
Well, ever, I wanna try and give an annual report on bus, um, to kinda give you an idea on the ins and outs of the operation. I know we just talked about bus from specifically a financial situation last time, um, but I kinda wanted to give you an idea of a little bit more of the operational aspect on, you know, staffing to routes, to, um, you know, where have we been, where are we going, sort of thing. So, uh, the beginning of this year, this fiscal year, we hired Southeast Ohio Regional Planning to help me do some of the managerial function. Um, so they helped, uh, me put this pro- this presentation together, um, in a report format, so I can digitally give that to you or I can print some off. There, there's a lot of color, so I wanted to say from that.
Who's the guy, by the way?
That's a, that's from the roundabout, I believe. I looked kinda mad, but I don't, I don't quite understand.
It's cause you were trying to work your way around that roundabout.
I know, right. Um, so this is our staffing. It consists of seven full-time, including myself, and then, um, we have a rotating shift of about ten part-time staffers. Uh, since I've been here, we've hired seven of them. So in two and a half years, we've had that much turnover on our part-time drivers. It's competing hours, it's, you know, going after full-time positions, it's, it's, it would be a good for a retired type person job, but there's, you know, there's things that come with it that sometimes those people don't wanna deal with. You know, we, we drive a lot of kids on the bus before and after school, and sometimes that's not exactly ideal for somebody, uh, wanting to drive a bus, but.
Can, can you email that to the city, the council, that report?
Yes, yep.
Please.
Uh, this is a, kind of an image of what our routes look like. We, we say that we operate ten fixed routes, which is not entirely true in the sense of what people think of a, as a fixed route. You know, fixed route you think of, it stays on that route, um, and it'll be here at ten-ten, you know, eleven-ten, twelve-ten, and, you know, there'll be bus stops and benches. But we, we still have some benches, but we don't have what you would consider a bus stop. We stop in, um, a lot of the same places all the time, you know, we stop, we, we start at the depot and we start our runs from there. Uh, but a lot of what we run otherwise is a deviated fixed route, or we call the shuttle service. So it, it makes our service very, um, dispatch-heavy. So a, a potential rider will call and say, I need to be picked up at Fifth and Garfield. Well, we have, we have a route that runs on that side, side of town, and then we usually ask where they wanna go. A lot of times we'll be able to directly drop them off within that bus or meet them up with the bus that's going in that general, in that direction. So it, it's a, it's, I hear a lot of times it's a taxi cab type service, what, it isn't, but you pick up from the corners, it's a little bit more direct. We made this change, um, nine years ago, or ten years ago, I don't remember the year. But it has helped us in efficiency as far as getting our buses fuller. Uh, you know, when you run on the same route, you don't typically have that. But what it has caused is a lot, uh, a lot more confusion amongst people that are unfamiliar with the system, moving into town and trying to look at our map and figure out how and where to get on. So, if you hit the next slide. Uh, one of the programs that was introduced in two thousand and thirteen, I think, uh, was the free kids rides in the summer. Lot of our ridership throughout the year is school kids. It makes up a fairly large percentage. And so during the summertime, we see some major drop-offs in ridership, and that was the reason for the introduction of the program. Uh, last year, as you can see, we transported seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three rides. So it doesn't necessarily mean we transported that many kids, it's just that's how many times a child was on the bus receiving a free ride. This is some of the numbers, so last year we had two hundred and thirteen thousand total rides. And then you can see we have breakdowns for DOT, go ahead.
Go back to the last slide for a sec. When, a lot of that, when that was tied in, and I don't know the effort that went on from the library side, but they made a concerted effort that first year to try to really promote usage of the library and coordinate that with the free ride service. The schools at the same time were starting their summer.
Free lunch program.
Free lunch and even I think breakfast, um, at some of the sites. And this was done in a way that was designed to tie into some of those efforts that were being done community-wide. So there are some other things that were going on community, in the community that helped to spur this program, and it's been, it's been a pretty good deal for the community as a whole and for the bus service.
And then we actually, we give a lot of rides to the day camp, um, and so the mess, the best, most efficient way is to pick up a gob of people and take them from spot A to spot B and then get them off the bus.
How many is a gob, Nick?
A gob is, um, about, no, I know.
Sorry, man, I couldn't.
I have, sometimes my vernacular is, is a bit interesting. If you'd hit the next slide.
It's midwestern.
I was just joking anyways, I know what a gob is, man.
Uh, so we have fourteen buses in our fleet, uh, they're all ADA compliant and they're light duty and medium duty. Um, as you can see, we put on two hundred and thirty thousand miles in a given year, and a lot of those miles are stop and go, um, uphill, downhill, uh, and there's a lot of idle time. So the thing that I, I wish they had on buses when you bought them was a, an hour meter to see what our idle time is. We have a lot of idle time, you know, when we're sitting at the depot for, for ten minutes prior to the round starting over, uh, versus, you know, dropping, going to the school and sitting in the school lines. But there, there's a lot of hours of just sitting there letting the motor run that aren't necessarily shown in the, in the miles. Some of that's already been talked about. You wanna hit the next slide for me? Uh, we talked about this, uh, at the budget conversation, but our total operating budget for this next, or for the, this is for fiscal year eighteen, was nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. A lot of that portion is personnel costs. Um, but the, the way that it's funded is through FTA funds, federal transit assistant money, and then state assistance money, and then local taxes is, is a pretty good chunk, about a quarter. And then we also have passenger revenue, and then we have a very small part of, um, advertising, and then we get some money from West Burlington as well. And that was, I guess, that's the other thing I didn't talk about is, is our route system covers Burlington and West Burlington. Uh, we, we don't go outside of the peripherals into the county anywhere. That's kind of CBus's territory. And CBus, I guess, has the freedom to operate from in-town to, to drop them out in the county. If you'd hit the next slide. Uh, they did some trend, um, monitoring on there to try and show where ridership has been and where operating cash is. If you would go to the next slide, I did a larger scope to give you a bigger perspective of what that means. Um, and I just put this in number, the next slide is actually a graph, but you can, if you go back to the numbers for me, the, the, you can see where we were in two thousand and five. The, the, the total rides was at a hundred and forty-seven, the operating cost was six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but then it's also reflected in the FTA and STA funds. We had hardly any money coming in comparatively to do, to what we have now. You know, if you look at the little, local tax for operations, we're actually, we were higher then than we are now, which is a good sign. So if you go to the next slide for me, and that's kinda what I wanted to show you with this graph. Um, the FTA and STA funds, especially this year, is that, is up seventy-six thousand from the previous year. And that's, that's good to see, and then you also see our local tax contribution level coming down. Uh, we, we hit a pretty good spike there in, uh, even oh-eight was pretty high, but twelve and thirteen when gas prices and, uh, diesel prices were up. We had a lot of VM costs also associated that year, and then personnel costs as well. Uh, so our fleet, uh, we have, uh, a lot of two thousand nine, ten buses. They're medium duty and light duty, as you can see broken down, uh, by the pie chart. Most recently, this does not have our two thousand and eighteen medium duty buses on there. Uh, those replaced a two thousand and one and a ninety-nine bus. Or is it two thousand two? We actually kept one of them because it was working. Some of the, this are, one of our seven twenty. I don't like you laughing at me, Jim. Bus number seven twenty-two is, as we'd call it, was actually in good operating condition, but it was past its useful life. We actually had purchased some light duty buses, um, in the past to replace some of the other ones. But the frames were just so rotted out that we couldn't operate them anymore. They weren't safe. So we did a, we did a replacement of that seven twenty-two with one of our old ones. And I will tell you the process to, especially when Grant, well, just ordering it in general, cause in two thousand and seventeen, we bought a bus with, uh, sales tax money, and that process took a while. It's a custom build. Anytime they build a bus, I, I think we waited for eight months for that one, and it took eleven months for the, the federal contracted ones. So it was, it was twi- it was, it took a long time to get a bus ordered. So when you say you got the money and you go through the process to get it ordered, it, it takes a while, and then by the time you get it up in operations, you have to go through all these processes with the DOT to, to get them on. But what I wanted to show with this is, is we have quite a few buses in the same timeframe, um, and they are the ones that are starting to show the end of their life. You know, they, they were, they're ones that we've spent, you know, thirty to forty grand on and on, in fixes over a fiscal year to, to be on the road. And so that, it doesn't take very many years of that for them to have been paid for, for a new one, but. If you'd hit the next, that's the end of it. Um, I guess, if you have any questions, I can answer them. You know, the, the bus service is one of those things that I think a lot of people don't know exists unless you use it on a regular basis. Actually, I had one more thing I wanted to talk about. Could you go back to, uh, the graph right there? Nope, next one, sorry, the numbers. The one thing I started thinking about as, as we were, as I was looking through the financials was, you know, when was our last rate increase on fares? And what was the reflection of that in ridership and then passenger revenue? In two thousand and, uh, for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, cause it was July one thirteen, we passed a quarter raise on our, um, one-time use, which then had a reflection on our monthly pass by, I think, five dollars, and then an annual, uh, pass cost as well. And you can see we had a nine thousand dollar increase in revenue the same year we had, you know, two thousand less rides. A lot of our ridership buys the passes, and so I think that's the reason why you see a lot of ride numbers generated and a lot of times where the revenue isn't necessarily there to back it up. So I guess, if we're ever considering a way to can, can help fund this department, I think maybe we need to talk about some sort of fare increase.
Um, you've also, you've had a, have you had a change in the structure in how, uh, your school ridership works on the fees that are done there?
Not yet.
Okay. Talked about that?
We talked about it last summer as, uh, as the school system started talking about the hub system that they wanna put into place. Essentially restructuring the whole way we would pick up, and we don't know how that would affect us. School, the school system would, was going to use the administration building first, and then, where was the second location? They're gonna use course? To drop off and pick up. Uh, and so with, they have certain rules that they can pick up, and I think it's two-mile radius around the hub. And so they were gonna be allowed to be able to pick up more kids that would essentially be within our district of picking them up.
Looking at, when you say increase, so what, what do you, I mean, obviously you've, you've kinda written some numbers through your head.
A- as far as the fare goes, I could see raising it another quarter, but.
If we raised that, cause I, I've listened to you talk about buses quite a bit, and one of the biggest things that you're always talking about is our ridership numbers. And those ridership numbers are what dictate the, the STA and FTA monies that come in.
Correct.
So if we see a decrease in those monies, do you feel like any increase you have is not only gonna have to make up for the potential for lost revenue due to a decrease in ridership, but also make up for any funds that are not dispersed in the FTA or STA grants for that same decrease?
I mean, general economics would tell you that you're gonna have a decrease in ridership. But I, I, I think we're, we're okay with, in the, we're probably still be in the two hundred thousand to, to, to two-ten on an average year. I think this year we're, we're on track to be at like the two-fifteen range. So I, I don't know that you're gonna see a drastic decrease, you know, I don't think you're gonna drop below two hundred thousand rides, should you increase by a quarter.
Those are the only numbers that are in the equation for, for the STA, not for the.
I wish I had the slide to try and show. Miles and the ridership go into a larger formula of the small urban, um, I can't even say it, the small urban area, so Clinton, Fort Dodge, and it comes up with a whole dollar figure that they have. I think what has happened more than we've gotten more percentage is that the overall dollar figure has increased that they're, that they're giving to those systems. So I don't think, you know, I think we get like three-point-six something percent of this dollar pool. That dollar pool has increased. Did I explain that okay? I mean, I don't know if.
Still, the, the, where you sit with your combination of your rides and miles helps to determine what that percentage is.
Correct, it does.
I guess, I guess I wonder, Mitt, or, uh, Nick, is that, you said something that kinda caught my attention when you said, a lot of people don't know about it. And so I guess my first knee-jerk reaction is how are we telling people about it to increase the ridership? So if you increase ridership, you know, and we could make a nice increase on it, that keeps your FTA and your STA funds, cause even if you did a quarter on two hundred and thirteen, uh, thousand rides, what's that, that's fifty, fifty-some thousand dollars. You know, if you lost some of those funds cause of a, cause of a, a rate increase, I'm just wondering if, you know, what can we do to better educate the community that it's out there? Now, speaking to service groups and PTAs, that kinda thing, uh, and I know you're busy, already busy, but what, I guess that's my question, is how are we educating people that that service is there now flexible it is? Cause there's a lot of people still have the misconception about even the routing, as you said earlier.
I, I think sadly, the only way that we really advertise is on our website. And it's not very good. It doesn't tell the rider anything other than the number that they should call.
I'm glad that came up because Van said we got Channel Seventeen that I think is being way underutilized. I think that's the way that we could just pump out information on a regular basis. And once people start getting used to, to go in there, I just, we've got that government channel.
Right, but think about the people that are gonna use a bus on a regular basis. They're typically not gonna resort to a television channel. A lot of them don't even have the ability to have cable, um, and, and may not even have a television. If you're gonna advertise for, for a, a bus service, where, where do most people get their information if you go into another city? Typically, it's wayfinding signage at a bus stop. So if there's a bus stop, typically that bus stop will list the routes, it'll list the times, and it'll list the contact information or other resources in order to be able to tap into to get more information. I don't think we have very much of that.
Would you do that down to depot at all?
Do we have any route structure at our depot? No?
That would, to me, that would make sense for where we do. It's, it's tough, one of the things with the, as he's talking. One of the things with the, as he's talked about are the way we don't operate on a fixed route. I mean, that's kind of a conscious decision of what a system is. There are different models to do it. And there are gives and takes to that. You increase, you enhance some of your cu- customer satisfaction in some ways in terms of flexibility of where you do pickups and drop offs. But you lose those fixed locations. Uh, you, with a fixed location though, you have people who have to walk mid, sometimes multiple blocks to get to a.
Sure.
A, a site, because we cannot get to all the po- points in the community.
And I understand that. I understand that because of the fact that, that it's more of a dispatch style. But I still think that if that information was out there, eventually.
The depot is the one location that we could do that, that's, that's a specific on the route. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't have something here um as well.
And I, and I've thought, I, I danced around with the idea of moving our, our dispatch down to the depot. And, you know, that's where they're, that's where they all, all the bus riders come is to the depot. I think it would make transactions a lot better, you know, paying for the bus passes or tokens. But there's also some disadvantages. I mean, you're now disconnecting the person that's coordinating the drivers with what routes they're going to be running and then also with vehicle maintenance. Um, plus you isolate that person from the rest of, you know, the rest of the public works operation.
Come in and they're able to talk with her when they come into the, into the public works.
But if they, if she was at the depot, they would be able to see her on an hourly basis because they're back at the depot every hour. And I, I see benefits to that, but, I mean, you do have to.
Well, do, do we have like, do we have any fixed locations outside of the depot that a driver is going to hit every time they take that route?
We, we're out at the hospital all the time.
Okay, but is there like a fixed location at the hospital? Every bus is going to drive right by this and is going to look with some type of shelter. Uh, and I think perhaps maybe we're lacking some of those things, even if you do have more of a dispatch style, even if there's four or five locations in the community that, hey, here's a shelter you can sit under, that um protect you from the wind, protect you from the rain. Um, there's signage in there that, that informs the rider about what they're going to experience or resources or routes. Even though we are doing a dispatch style, that makes sure that every driver hits that spot on that route.
With the two routes that, you know, the one that runs up Agency Street and goes out to the college and the hospital, that one goes on that route twelve times a day. And then there's one that goes up uh around just to, it ends up, we call it Westland Mall because that's where it ends up. Those go through that every, all the time, but other, the other buses don't go out there per se. You know, paratransit will go out to the hospital, but they have distinct route pickups. You know, paratransit's a little bit different than our fixed route system where you call ahead and wheelchair pickup and we go in and we drop them off at the hospital, but.
Well, and I think, I think most of people in the community that don't have a vehicle or don't have the financial means in order to take a cab or Uber or whatever is out there. Um, they're gonna, they know the system. They know how to pick up the phone and make the phone call where to go. I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question for the people that don't know it. So, you know, if I'm coming to Burlington and I'm staying for a couple of weeks with a friend, um, and, and, or I'm, I'm at a hotel. Uh, where do I go for the nearest bus service? There's, there's just not a lot of ways to try and get that information because we don't have those fixed bus stop stops.
No, I, I mean, I agree. We don't have, I think the best way we can probably put that out there is, is you just call. You could set up an U- an Uber type system where you have a, a digital format that sets locations to pick up and then drop off. And there's a lot of processing with that. But I mean, it, it is another option other than a strictly phone operation, but then you're asking somebody to have a, a phone and an application. But um, I do want to, I didn't bring up the rate increase just strictly as a, as like, I want to raise the rates on the train. I just wanted to, as a thing that we didn't talk about in the budget is, you know, if you're looking for more revenue. You know, the one way to do things is raise revenue, uh, and a rate increase would be one of those. But I, I wouldn't say that you're going to raise fifty thousand dollars on a rate increase. A lot of our, a lot of our ridership comes from the same people using the bus pass thirty, forty times a month.
Do we um, do we any, do we do anything to measure the um capacity of the buses as they're being used?
Like how full they are on a, on an hourly basis.
Right, so buses are.
We take the stats of, of the number of riders that are on hourly. But we don't probably cross that with the capacities because unfortunately the routes that they're running aren't, they're not the same buses, so those capacities percentages would change. I ca- and I guess we could do that. It, it would be some data collecting that we would have to keep track of.
I, I do like the, the consideration of maybe putting a, a routing sign up down at the depot since that's the hub. And maybe even one at the hospital since they hit that one all the time. I, I, when I grew up during the time that they had the bus shelters and, and, you know, they got pretty vandalized from time to time. And so I'm worried that if we had those and, and they had signage up in them, they might get kind of damaged. By the same token, I could see where there'd be some advantage to some of the hotspots that you could tell by, hey, we're always dropping people off at Fairway Center, wherever that may be. Uh, but I, I definitely could see, I would be in favor of, of at least having signage at those two spots. And maybe giving some, you know, pamphlets out at the schools and.
There you go.
Hotels and that kind of thing.
I'd like to partner with the schools.
To try to educate people what's available. Then it has to be color or anything. They could just be, because.
And we have, we have brochures and we have them out for distribution. I think the biggest thing that people are looking for is they're looking for that map. They're looking for, okay, I'm going to get on this bus at X location and get over here by this time. I think that's probably the biggest, even the dispatching part, is there's not a lot of pre-planning where I need to get on bus to go to here to get onto my connecting bus to be out there by ten thirty, when my appointment at the hospital is until eleven twenty or something. You know, they, there's just not a lot of, you know, it's a lot of planning that goes into it.
Yeah, I, I still feel like just, it's not a very large network. I still feel like you can have kind of hybrid of both the dispatch style with a fixed style route system. With, with a few fixed um locations. You know, I think of the middle of downtown. The depot's great, uh, but somebody that's not from around here, they, they may not want to get dropped off at the depot and have to walk over and then walk back. Um, you know, the hospital's a great location. The Roosevelt Corridor's got a couple of spots that could probably be hit. Um, the airport probably makes sense. I mean, I don't, I, I don't see why we couldn't have five or six fixed spots and then the rest of it be kind of dispatched in between.
Well, in, in the, on the fixed routes, they are. Those spots are always hit.
Okay.
But we don't, you know, we go to Hy-Vee and Aldi's a lot. They're not going to allow us to put up a bus stop station. Actually, the front lobby of those stores function as the bus stop.
Well, and I think it, you know, should be pointed out, Nick, we know you, this has kind of been a thrust upon you type job. But when you, when you look at some of the dollars that are there on the FTA and, and the STA, and if you can increase those ridership numbers. You know, I, but what I was looking for is what's the offset versus a fare increase? You know, and when does it become time that we actually hire someone to run the buses, to make it a little more efficient so they can work on these issues?
Uh, three years ago, we got rid of somebody to run the bus system in two thousand fourteen, two thousand thirteen in that timeframe. And you did see the numbers drop a little bit.
Okay.
We dropped a route at that point and we moved away from more of the fixed route to more of the demand response at that time. And it was recommended to increase our ridership. And, and it worked. Um, our numbers have, have uh, when we got rid of Saturday service, we saw an initial drop, but we've had it pulled, pulled back up. The numbers pulled back up since then.
Still operate on Saturdays, but you have to call ahead Friday and schedule in advance and we only operate, you know, essentially two loops. And then, you know, it's over with, but.
And I think you had a little bit other hours that were looked at for service withdrawal at that time. I can't remember if you dropped.
You know, the other conversation that's been pushed forward is, you know, you, you get done too early in the end of the afternoon and you don't start early enough. You know, for those second and third shift type folks where we can probably get you there or pick you up when you're done, but we can't do the opposite. And so there's been a conversation about, could you run a later night type service? Without the ridership to, to prove that that would make sense to do, I don't know how you could, you could extend your hours.
That's why I asked about the capacity. Uh, I mean, if you're running at near full capacity, then perhaps a rate increase makes sense. But if you're running at twenty to thirty percent capacity, then perhaps it probably isn't the best idea.
Mornings you're running at fairly high capacity.
Even afternoon, you know, we leave Ed Stone schools with a medium duty bus, so thirty seats, thirty seated spots. And there's kids standing in the hallways, you know, just because there's that, there's that many kids that ride it. You know, it's, it's called a tripper service, so it's for the school kids, but if general public wants on, we have to allow it because of ADA. Um, but yeah, that bus is, is packed for a short duration, but you know, the, a lot of, our school runs in the morning and afternoon. Those nine or ten routes that we have, they're full buses.
But then you have your off hours where you're having one or two riders on at the time, but you still have to run those routes.
Yeah, absolutely. But if on those off hours, could you have five riders if you had more fixed locations and better advertising? I mean, I, you, you, you won't know unless you did it, so.
Sorry, I don't want to continue this much anymore longer than you want. Uh, Regional Planning is also doing a couple of other things for us uh with transit. They're going to be doing some uh ridership surveys, so hopefully some of that information will maybe, that's the things that I don't have time to do. So that's, that'll, some of that will show, you know, what kind of ridership is needed. Is there different locations? Is there different kinds of things that are needed from the transit system? So that's a, that's another thing that they're working on that they'll bring forward to me, so. Other than that, taking enough of your time.
Your uh transit department really, when, when you lost a, you lost a halftime person that was running that?
They were doing right away permits and.
For the other half.
Types of stuff.
Uh, when that position was lost, um, it put a lot more duties on Nick, but also on your lead driver to fill in.
Oh, yeah.
And the two of them have done a, a tremendous job, especially folks coming up from below to, to fill in and make things work. But um, if you want the system to operate better, to increase rides and to have the things that you'd like to see. And I think that you really need to have that position funded again.
Everybody agree?
He doesn't have time to, to do this stuff. Just, just doesn't.
I agree.
All set.
Alright.
Thanks Nick.
Thank you.
Anybody have any problems with appointments?
Nope.
Good. Mr. Tisner? Mr. Phillips?
Nope.
Oh, uh, I will be going to uh, be going to uh Des Moines on the seventh uh to uh, to pray for the opening of the Senate. I went with Senator Courtney twice and now I'll be uh, be going as a guest with Senator Green. So um, we'll be asking for the Lord's blessing uh over the year two thousand nineteen. And I'm going to be the one asking for the blessing and me and the Lord are like this, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, I had something else I wanted to say. I just want to say hello to the girls, get to feel better, counselor.
Good.
James?
Pool bids. Are we doing anything on pools?
Uh, not at this time. They're still working on plans, so it looks like it may be a fall project. Um, we need full engineered plans on that and haven't gotten those as of yet, so.
Alright, do we have radio this week?
You do.
Oh, yes, radio is Wednesday. I can do it if you.
I can't.
I think I'm.
I'm already locked up.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Wait, is it nine to ten?
Nine to ten.
I can't.
I'll uh, I'll check with one of the girls, but you're in.
I'll, I'll reach out to them.
Okay.
Since you guys are both busy, I'll do it.
Alright, thank you counselor.
Uh, I forward you the legislative link. Issue that I would say this, that's going on right now, that's probably of, of the higher importance from a city perspective and just local control. I, the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities is pushing a bill uh in regards to uh boards, board members on utility boards and the, the level of control that a local city council has over them. It's not one that has ever been an issue here and I don't know of a community where it has been an issue, but the ability to, to have some control if things are going awry is, that's, that's important. IMU is pushing it, that evidently it's been an issue somewhere that some of their membership would like to see more autonomy and not have to be uh under some level of control from a, a city council or oversight.
Is that because it, their proposal just got, wasn't approved? I just read that they had an ap- a proposal for a community where they were going to uh change the rates, not approved.
By the council?
Yeah.
Uh, it certainly could be, because what I'm hearing is uh IMU is kind of on a track right now where they're pushing a this will be part of potentially a series of bills that may, over the next few years, uh push for a lot more aut- autonomy of the, of the separate utility boards. Now, I come from a background where we hit, have had separate utility boards in a lot of communities. And it, there's a lot of sense to have a level of separation so it is, they're able to make decisions that don't necessarily always fall into the, the w- the whims that can happen i- in a passionate moment. And that's kind of why you have a separate deliberative board that kind of has that oversight. But you still need to have some level of ability if things go awry to have control. Cities need to make their voice for, the legislator isn't hearing voices from cities, because it hasn't really been that big of an issue for cities. So it's, doesn't come across as something that they have to raise their voice, but we do need to. Uh, just to make sure that we have a protection for the what ifs. That's it.
Okay, thank you everybody. Good night.